I call the North Smithfield School Committee meeting of August fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three to order. Please call the roll.
Chair Lombardi?
Present.
Yeah. Mr. Underwood, why? Mr. Student, why?
Here.
Here.
We have four present. We have a quorum. Pledge of allegiance, please.
I like, like allegiance to the black of the United States of America. And through the law of the which stands foundation, I figure out indivisible liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to public comment or community comments, does anybody, would anybody from the public like to speak?
Good evening, school committee. Sorry, it's working. Yes, okay. Good evening, school committee members. My name is Gino Elias, the football coordinator for North Smithfield Express Football and Chair. On August seventh, I delivered remarks on behalf of Express Football and Chair of the North Smithfield Town Council tonight. I'll be delivering remarks on behalf of the North Smithfield Express Football and Chair. Well, I am alone tonight, as many of our volunteers and coaches are on the field with their kids, which is where I would also like to be tonight. On August twelfth, Express Football and Chair in a joint statement with Worldwide of Indoor Sports retracted part of our statement as it relates to Worldwide of Indoor Sports and their representative, Rob Bono. This retraction was issued only after we learned that the contract with the four dates that were promised by Mach One to Express was never executed by our organization. Furthermore, we were not aware of that language within the contract stated that if any organization is late on payment twice in a calendar year, Worldwide of Indoor Sports reserves the right to reassign those dates to other clubs. Express was in fact late on those payments. Like our previous statement to the town council, Worldwide of Indoor Sports is a business. We may not agree with tactics, but we do get it. We could argue that Worldwide could have given the organization a false saying we're in jeopardy of losing those dates. Yes, they could, but not required to do so. Do we believe, Mr. Bono, since the town council meeting has put the kids in the community first in each discussion? Yes, we do. We held ourselves accountable and issued a retraction base, and because no one should ever fall into question the integrity of our organization when it comes to doing the right thing. What you did not read in the retraction statement we issued was any retractions of the statements we made at that town council. We got in the school department, the rental process of two thousand twenty-two, and who we believe was managing the turf field during all of two thousand twenty-two and continuing through February of twenty-three, in which we contend that Mach One, ATM, whatever way you want to call it, was in fact managing it in some capacity or receiving priority usage of the turf field. This is factual, because we, as Express, negotiated directly with Mach One in August and September of two thousand twenty-two to receive field time on that turf field. This happened. No one can dispute it. If you're not managing the field in some capacity, why on earth would we have to negotiate with anyone other than the school department? Why would Mach One even agree to negotiate something they had nothing to do with in two thousand twenty-two? So where are we today? Our kids will be playing in North Smithfield High School for the fourth home games. We believe while ATM manages the field, communication will be better. We believe Mr. Bono will act in good faith. But we also know as an organization that it is important to maintain good relations with any managing company that will ultimately be the one to allow our kids the ability to play on that field. As for the school department, a meeting was scheduled for eleven AM on Monday this morning, in which Mr. Bono, Superintendent St. Jean, and Mr. Lombardi were supposed to be present. When we got there today, the only two present in the room was Mr. St. Jean and Mr. Bono. Mr. Lombardi wanted to Mr. St. Jean to be reached by phone if needed. At the conclusion of this meeting, I advise Mr. Bono and Superintendent St. Jean that to move forward in good faith, we believe in being transparent with them, but also with the public, and we will be releasing a statement to include the discussions from today's meeting. In this meeting, Express brought forward the following for their consideration. The superintendent St. Jean under section seven of the contract signed with ATM to allow for our organization to sell our own concessions or allow for a percentage of proceeds we return to our organization. We are not asking to use the concession space or to have access into the concession area. Simply a set of tables when you walk in the gate. In section seven, it reads, and I quote, "ATM shall have the non-exclusive right to offer for sale on, in, or about the building and property any beverages, food, including the right to arrange for food and drink sales using food trucks. The use of and location of the food trucks must be approved by the district." It's important to know that having concession, what concession means to organizations like us. Concession sales are key income stream for all organizations like us, and with either prior consultation or recourse from reclamation like ours, and with, I'm sorry, that income stream, for lack of better terms, was stolen from our children and our program and our community, and those profits were given to this for-profit enterprise through the agreement. Whether this was on purpose or not is not the issue. We ask to consider, we ask the superintendent to consider allowing programs that are direct feeder programs to the high schools such as ours benefit from the in-town rate for the use of the turf field. The high school football team is a co-op with Mount St. Charles, and we as a feeder program primarily co-op with Blackstone Millville kids to ensure this feeder program will remain vibrant well into the future. And if not, an option to consider having a different rate schedule for all nonprofit youth sport programs versus for-profit youth sports programs when renting the field. We believe this is important when we speak about not being able to compete with for-profit organizations for field usage. We also ask to consider reaching out to all in-town and nonprofit youth sport organizations that use this field and see how this contract and any contracts with ATM or any other for-profit organization will affect their program. Something we believe strongly should have occurred prior to finalizing any contract with any for-profit organization. That feedback, in our opinion, is critical when we talk about putting the kids at the forefront of every discussion. To be transparent, I received an email from Mr. Bono on August eleventh, two thousand twenty-three, we got an express receiving a percentage back from concessions. Impart this email, and I can make it available to you all. This season will be tough to help out, but he agreed if things go better than projections, he will make a donation towards the end of the season as we feel having express as a good partner moving forward makes sense for all parties. As far as next season goes, he would like to offer fifteen percent return to express on concessions income. This is what he does for the Kranson program as well. We will handle the renegotiation with North Smithfield Public Schools for the rental fees if necessary. In closing, negotiations should be handled with the superintendent and the school committee. When it comes to organizations like ours, it can never get to a point where an organization like ours becomes dependent on a for-profit organization to do our bidding and decide what we will and won't receive. The contract allows for organizations like ours to negotiate and bring issue to light issues to light to the superintendent and to the school committee. The school department's own policy on facility use fees, in which the organizations will pay for the rental of the turf field as a number four next to it. That number four indicates, and I quote, "Subject to negotiations for long-term multiple-use requests." We've been there since nineteen ninety-five. That's pretty long term in my eyes. This is a school department policy, and the superintendent is charged with these negotiations, not a for-profit company. We will remain hopeful that they heard us today and will do the right thing, not just for our organization, but the residents of this town and their kids and all organizations like us. The contract signed with ATM at the very end under section forty-five reads, "Modification: Disagreement may be waived, modified, or amended unless and written by both parties here too." Today's meeting, two of these men were in attendance today, and they can do exactly that. They can change it and do what we believe is the right thing. I would encourage this committee to look at all nonprofit youth organizations before any other agreements are signed in the future so you can realize the impact it has on us and other organizations like us. And we believe if that is done, then that will truly be putting the kids at the forefront of every discussion. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Former councilman Baden.
Well, that is three-one green.
It's our honor to see you here.
My pleasure to be here.
Former school committee member, too.
Yes.
Okay.
I don't know the police station. Um, the reason I'm here tonight is parking issues up at Veteran Stadium. I'm sure you guys are aware about it. It continues to get worse. I've come by here twice in the last month on a Saturday. You have people walking in the street not well lit, and people that are leaving the facility cannot see the traffic coming because their cars are parked there. It's well marked, no parking. This goes on on Sundays as well when Express is using the field up there multiple times. Now, I know you can do this and not park on the street. On the twenty-third of August of July, excuse me, I had an event on the facility, a car show for the nice of Columbus. We had two hundred and something cars, show cars, show up for and probably over three hundred cars in the high school parking lot, visitors coming from the day. We had nobody parked on the street. So I know it can be done, and I know it's not your responsibility to enforce it. But rather than just come here and complain, I'm going to offer you a solution or a potential solution by changing your policy. It says if you use the field, you simply need to have a police detail. Because ultimately, sitting in that seat all the time, you are still responsible if something happens up there. And if something does happen, it'll be a lawsuit, and you'll be named. Mrs. May and myself were named previously in a lawsuit. It's really something I think that you really have to look at. You see the people with stories that people are putting out there. Well, they got, you should do this, you should do that. And it's like, all these things are in place. You have a set of stairs from this parking lot to get into the field. You have a lit pathway up to the field. There's really no reason for them to be parking on the street. I mean, they parked literally right in front of the street sign that says, "No parking." And I have talked to the chief, and I'm going to have a meeting with the chief tomorrow, and I'm going to talk to him again about it. But I think potential solution would be to amend your policy to say, and it'd be, I filled out this form, and so there is that option that says you need police apply a detail at the event. And so maybe that's something that you have to address as you go forward with. And I don't think you even have to deal with the management company. I think it's, whoever's using the field at certain times, it's going to have a problem like that. And it won't take long to resolve the issue. And I'm not saying just send the police up there and start writing out books and tickets. They can simply go in there and make an announcement, "Hey, any cars parked out there? You got five minutes to move them," or something like that. Whoever's running the event should be able to make the announcement. There's no parking out there in the street. Move them. And they've been warned. But the other thing would be that potentially you might want to have a police detail there, just for safety reasons. It is becoming a bigger and bigger issue. And it can't be, and it's not just a, well, you know, there's not enough handicap parking and people can't. If you're parking off the road over there and you're handicapped, it'd be better off walking in the dark in the field than walking on the side of the road over there, so. Just bring it to your attention as a potential solution. That may be, that may be what you have to do is review them on a case by case, and with the superintendent, they just smack off, "Yep, you need a police detail." It's no cost to you. It's no cost to the town. It goes to the, they're using the facility, so. Potential solution. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'm going to yield the meeting to the vice chair. So my name is James Lombardi, chairman of the school committee. And I'm here. I wasn't prepared to speak, but I will. Mr. Oles, if I may. So, you know, you mentioned a number of different things that I just want to address. Not saying I'm right or wrong. You know, you mentioned that it should have been brought to the public. This contract has been brought to the, it was on the council agenda a number of times, and the president of NYSSA, that's the right term, but North Smithfield Youth Soccer Association came and said an objective. He then worked that out with the owners of, I think it's ATM, and, or the owner of ATM and resolved that issue. So I know that a number of times, I said on the blogs and everything, this was a secret contract. It was on the agenda at least two or three times, to my recollection. The other thing is the owner of ATM, the first time I met him personally, is at the meeting in which they awarded the contract. I am a supporter of putting the the field in concession stand out to bid for a for-profit corporation. And the reason is we needed to professionalize it. I'm not saying I'm right, or I'm not saying the committee was right in what they did. They were right at the time, but we are more than willing to listen. But attacks about things we did or didn't do and all this other stuff. The example is the president of the Youth Soccer Association saying, you know, what can we do here? Came to, came to the meeting and discussed it. I don't understand why there needed to be a statement or a retraction. And, you know, I am the biggest sports person, and I support sports a thousand percent. I'll do anything for sports. But this is the way we went. It was a one-year contract. I believe, and I'm only going to go off the top of my head, that the concession stand, we put it out to bid, there were no bids. But what do we do? Now, could we do a program in a high school, which I support a thousand percent, to have students do it? Yes, but it's a little more complicated to me. Okay, we need to, we needed to get that concession stand open. We needed to do what we had to do to get it running. And is it a for-profit corporation? Yes. Who else is going to guarantee us thirty-five thousand dollars a year plus seven hundred fifty dollars a month? Now, again, it's a one-year contract. Do we look at it again? Yes. The other thing that I know that I wanted to state, you have been a longtime supporter of the field, but I don't think you've been there since two thousand twenty. Um, so Bach One at that time did take over in two thousand and twenty and gave us approximately twenty thousand dollars a year to rent the field. That was a winfall for us. And again, we support you. We'll do, you know, we'll bend over backwards. But, you know, the majority of your members are not North Smithfield people and willing to bend over backwards to help. But at some point, in fifteen years, when we have to change the turf field, there has to be money set aside, or it's going to be a dust bowl, with all due respect. It's going to, it would have been, there was a lot of people pushing for turf, I mean, for grass. There was a lot of people saying, "We can't afford it, period." Just don't have a football team, don't have anything. There was a number of people out there. But no, we went out there, took our chances, and protected the kids. The field was very dangerous. We protected the kids, spent a million dollars over there. Are we perfect? No. Is that what we needed to do at the time? Yes. And we went out and we did what we had to do. So I, 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 yeah, I know the superintendent bends over backwards, working with people. I know Rob Bono does, because I've seen it. And I just want to say, I'm taken back by your comments. I've said that publicly. And I don't know why it's even necessary. I think that if you work with the superintendent, you work with Mr. Bono, we're a committee. We don't, we're not on the day-to-day stuff. I know you said I missed the meeting today. I already told the superintendent I was not coming. I worked during the day. If you asked, you know, if you demanded that I came, I probably would have been there, to be honest with you. I did say that I, you know, I had, you could call me. But I didn't think it was necessary. I'm I'm a chairman of a committee. Like, I'm not, I don't, we set the overall policy, and then we don't get involved in the day-to-day operations or anything like that. So I just want to let you know, you know, I'm here to say that the committee, in my opinion, did the right thing at the time. It was a hundred percent the right thing. Do, after a year, we have to reevaluate and move forward? Absolutely. But that doesn't mean we're not going to do the same thing. But it also means that maybe we, you know, you mentioned, do we share revenues? Absolutely. I'd be more than happy to ask superintendent to call ATM or whatever the contractor is and say, "Listen, you know, they were making, you know, they were making X amount of dollars." You know, can we, can we split that? Can we give, like you said, fifteen percent? More than happy to advocate for that. The other thing that, you know, I've seen, and I support a thousand percent, but it's more complicated than it seems, is it a senior project? Okay, is it a senior project but that the students work there, and then instead of getting paid, there's a donation or something to that effect? Because remember, they're certified in food services, they have insurance, you know, they, I think they have the background checks. Background checks, et cetera. So that's a very stable environment for us. Now, you know, can we have kids work there? Absolutely. Can we have kids take it over? Well, what happens when the basketball team is there at night? I don't know. Do they open up? They might open up. They're open now. The bathrooms are open. I don't know, but it all has to be worked out. It's not intentional that we're intentionally doing something. It's, we're trying to do what's right for the kids, just like you are. So I would appreciate in the future if you reached out. And I understand it reach out, and sometimes, you know, we're a little lax in getting back to you, not myself, but but reach out again, please. We're willing to work with you. Thank you.
So I certainly appreciate your comments. I'm not a political guy. Okay, I'm a guy that just wants to make sure that kids have a place to play, but not just a place to play, a place where they want to, they've been playing since nineteen ninety-one, from their first game off. Now, we speak about, let's not playing on the field yet. Well, COVID, there was no season. Twenty twenty-one, you guys ripped it up. We played in Oxford. I won't debate that, but it's important to know why we weren't there, right? So that's why we weren't at the field, right? You know, I'll say this. When I, when I, actually, when I thought about coming here today and addressing this, I was really actually happy you weren't at the meeting today. I was, because then you're staying in line with your overall approach of recusing yourself from such topics. And there's plenty of people on the school committee that can speak to this issue other than you, I'm sure, especially if you want to maintain that line. Maintain the line of, "I'm not getting involved for the reason you stated in your recusal." But make no mistake about it, we would not be standing here if we were just treated appropriately, communicated to appropriately, if people would not, and I'll, actually, I'll back up. If I sent an email three weeks ago to the superintendent, and he told me to deal with Rob Bono, I got the email. I can share it. Now, that might have been a miscommunication, and I'll take it as that. And he met us today, so that is progress. Perfectly fine, but we need to do the right things moving forward. And I'm not saying anyone's perfect. I'm certainly not perfect. But by learning through this together, hopefully, moving forward, you guys do understand that folks like us, and there's a lot of us, organizations like us, depend heavily heavily on concessions and other things to allow for kids to play sports, affordable. Now, it's been suggested to me and to our board that we should raise the price of tuition to register, to resolve the offsetting costs of the field. Okay, that was suggested today outside of the meeting today. We're not raising prices for our kids. There's no way we're raising prices for our kids. Okay, far too many organizations cost a lot of money. There are a lot of families out there that just can't afford it, and no kid's going to suffer because their mom or dad or whoever can't come out of pocket another twenty-five dollars, fifty dollars. Yeah, ten bucks, twenty-five bucks to some, maybe nothing. But it may be everything to other people, and I think we need to be mindful of that. As for as for today, I said it when I ended, I hope that there's some consideration given to us. It's not too late. This contract says non-exclusive, which means they don't have full authority to run concessions. That's what the contract reads. I'm not making that up. So exercise the right as a school committee, as a superintendent to allow us to sell concessions. So we're asking. And I'll say this, there's ninety-five kids in North Smithfield playing this year. Those numbers are going to rise. We have a lot of good people, a lot of good people. We're out there. We're doing CPR classes. We're doing safety classes for the community. We're doing free combines, right? We're not charging. We're not charging for any of it. We're doing this for free so the kids can be safe on that field and that these kids have a place and an organization they can be proud of. With that being said, I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
So if, you see, no, there's really no back and forth of law. So I just want to address two quick issues for you. First of all, I said I support you a thousand percent. Whatever we can do, we support you a thousand percent. I know you brought up the recusal. I'll give you the statement on the recusal. So I supported going off and professionalizing the field one thousand percent. We went out to bid, didn't happen. And what happened was my son, who plays soccer, just like hundreds of other kids in town, started playing, and I noticed that the money was going to Worldwide, Wide World of Sports, which now I know in my head, okay, I guess, with the theory contracting with them. So as soon as that happened, I said in my mind, although I think it's so immaterial, I didn't, you know, I didn't necessarily have to, but I did say, "It's so immaterial, somebody's going to bring up an issue." So of course, I recuse, somebody brings up an issue. So the fact is, is that my son played at Wide World, and I recuse. I separated out and did not talk to a committee member, not talk to the superintendent about it or anything else. It went forward. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. My son no longer plays there, so I don't think I have, I don't think I have any conflict. Plus, as the committee chair, I represent the committee. Once they vote, I have to move forward with what they believe in, whether I believe in it or not. So I just wanted to put that out there. So any other comments?
We have somebody on Zoom.
Yeah, we, that's not.
The name Mike, which I don't know if that's me on my other laptop.
Okay, that's, well, I think last meeting we determined that you had to be here to speak. Okay, if it's you, you can speak. You're here. I don't think it's me. All right. Does anybody else in the audience want to speak? Hearing none, I'll move on to the consent agenda. Does anybody have any questions about the consent agenda? Hearing none, I'm, and saying a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Don't move.
Motion being made. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? The ayes have it? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? The ayes have it. Uh, I'll, I'll, uh, if there's no objection, I'd like to move up. Uh, item six two, introduction of special education local advisory committee. C L A C.
Good evening, everyone. Um. Gotta stay a little further away from the mic, because I have a lot of voice. I'm here tonight because I'm very pleased that um in the ten years that I've been here. We haven't really had a truly active C L A C, C L A C as special education, um, local advisory committee. We've had Mrs. Pendergast step up a couple of times and try to help out, and we've had speakers. Um, but we haven't really had parents who were willing to just take the ball and run with it. And this year. Um, we have three parents that have actively gotten involved, and I'm going to introduce. Um, the first one, and then she will introduce her committee. Um, and this parent is Nicole Lavoy. Thank you. So my name's Nicole Lavoy, and I actually have three kids in the North Smithfield School District. I have um going in first grade this year, going into second grade, and going into next grade. So I've. Up till last year, I had someone in every school, but now we're we're spreading it a little bit. But also with me, I want to introduce Sarah Brenneman, who's gonna be my co-chair. And Ali Foman, who's gonna be treasurer. We are actively seeking a secretary, so if anyone knows anyone. That's the one position we need to fill. But I wanted to just give a little bit of background, because like you said, you haven't had an active parent-led, like fully parent engagement committee. And what, for ten years, I think. Um, so the three of us kinda united just because of. You know, common organizations in town, and you know, we've known each other for a while, through the neighborhood. And we kind of determined amongst us that the one thing that was driving all of us. Is we were either already trained in special ed advocacy. We're in the process of going through training to be a special ed advocate. Or we were actually working as a special ed advocate. So when we brought that together, we just decided like, we need to fill this gap. In this district and take all of our shared knowledge and help other families and help see what we can do to partner. With the superintendent, people services, all the principals and everything to kind of. See where we find gaps or where we can improve um communications and everything for all of the students in the district. So I know not everyone will be familiar with it, so I brought, actually brought flyers. We've been working very hard this summer to assemble together documentation and communication to really hit this school year running. Um, so what you have in front of you is kind of our, our first draft of a brochure that we'll be working with Sue and Mike to get into. All of the different um I E P mid-meetings, eligibility meetings. Um, we're gonna be at all the back of school, open houses and orientations, and really start. Putting ourselves out there as a group that is engaging parents. Um, but I want to share um a couple of things that are on the brochure for those who can't see it. Um, one thing we've identified is as our mission is. Facilitating collaboration and communication between students, parents, and school district. And community in order to promote equality and inclusivity. For all children receiving special education services within the North Smithfield School District. And I think that's really the key to driving this, is that we're really trying to. Advocate for the students and really work for equality and inclusivity within the entire district, no matter. What the needs are, or what the challenges are, what the strengths are. We really wanna look at the all abilities in all children, not just. Um, you know, specific situation. And we wanna do it from a holistic view and um. Approach parents and families and see what's working, what's not working. And try to take it at a systematic level. Um, and in general, I just wanted to share that the purpose of the committee is, we're, like I mentioned, we're district-led. Parent-led, I mean, district-level parent-led group, and our goal is to provide direct input to school district leaders about policies. Programs, practices, and services that have an impact on students with disabilities and their families. Uh, we can help improve educational outcomes, identify unmet needs. And increase the proactive, productive involvement of families by inviting their input. In ways that can be used to shape local special education policy. We also aim to share resources and infinite information from district, state, and federal education leaders. To empower families as they navigate the education process. Um, one of the requirements for an active C L A C within each district within Rhode Island is to have four quarterly meetings. So we've actually already been working with Sue to um confirm those dates. So we're looking at. September twelfth, December twelfth, March twelfth, and June eleventh. Um, we're hoping to do that six thirty to seven thirty in the North Smithfield High School library. Um, but if you follow the different. School websites and principal emails and newsletters and that type of stuff, we'll definitely be firming that up within. The next week or so for the September one, and then going forward for future ones. Um, but I think it's important just to share that the committee is just the three of us. But the the committee as a whole, I mean, the board is just the three of us. The committee is to be made up of parents, teachers, educators. Special ed, gen ed, um, students, if they're fourteen or older and they're in that transition. Timeframe where they're starting to develop more independence, they're also invited, uh, the community members. The key is just that over fifty percent of it, eighty one percent has to be. Parents who are receiving special education services within the district. So. Um, you know, I will make sure that Mr. St. Jean or someone can share. Um, we're working with Mike on a a website, so we can have a form for that, but I'll make sure that somehow we we share how to find us on Facebook. And um email and all that type of stuff as a whole, so that, you know. We encourage people to come forward and work with us and actually, um. The Q R code on the back of all of those flyers will bring you to a link tree, and it has a submission form so that you can. Get added to our email distribution list, so we can start engaging parents directly.
And do, when do you get the matching T-shirts?
Those, those are temporary, and you have real ones coming. Probably by next week. Anyone have any questions, sir?
Um, I asked you a question. But I would just like to congratulate all of you, because this is a real important undertaking. Um, forty years ago, and I can't even believe that I'm saying that timeframe, but I was involved and my husband was as well. He was the advocate. Um, uh, we were involved in it, and I have to say the special ed program just comes such a long way since then. And yet still, we as parents have to be our first and best children's advocates. So I really give you um a lot of kudos for doing this, and thank you for your enthusiasm and dedication to this. Congratulations. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, moving on to uh reports, superintendent.
Well, I don't know whether or not to be excited about the new school year, starting almost imminently. Or be panicked because the school year is starting so soon. But we have had a number of amazing hires. Uh, we have some top-notch talent coming in to start the school year with us. About a month ago, I was sharing, I put up on Facebook some other renovations. I'm looking to update that. Most of the classrooms in this building have been painted. The N S E S library is getting a a a really a major makeover, and I'm looking forward to seeing what kind of. Personal space that the the library is going to become. The high school library. Uh, also getting a bit of a makeover, painting uh throughout the high school, and you can really see in the live uh new windows. And my God, I forgot, there was so much light that could come into that library because it was so dark with the shades and. Um, so we just have really great teachers coming on board. We have. Um, fantastic renovations happening throughout the building. We have some new programs coming on uh on board, especially for social emotional. Uh, we have involvement with uh uh C L A C, with parents, and again. And I pointed out when I met with Nicole, this was one of our items on the strategic plan that I presented to you uh. Three months ago, uh, was for more of these parent committees and outreach, and I specifically mentioned C L A C. In 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 one of the action steps. So thank you for making my job easier. So. So that's basically it. I mean, we're going to be starting up school sooner than later. It's coming upon us, and we are incredibly excited about uh having the kids back.
Thank you. Moving on to item number uh uh four, which is informational. Um, these are all the appointments, anybody, appointments. Resignations, uh, retirements, leave backs.
And again, it's a stellar group of people, but what I I would like to uh highlight, Amanda Bean. Who is our new athletic director. Uh, they choose to fill with uh Matt Cat stepping down, but she comes in, um. I should tell you. I know, I've known Matt for a long time. I like her better. On 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 a personal level, um.
It's much nicer. I met her.
Yeah, I know. But she she went through two different interview committees. Uh, and she was just spectacular. She comes to us as um. Uh, she assisted the athletic director in Oxbridge. She's a certified athletic trainer. Uh, she's actually certified as a P E teacher. And but most importantly, she's also a North Smithfield graduate. So she knows our school, she knows our students, she knows our teachers, she knows our program, and she's just coming in with a tremendous amount of energy. Uh, to take our athletic programs to a new level. And again. I will text Matt and tell him what I said, it was a joke, all right, so.
Well, he'll he'll agree to you. He'll agree with you.
Yeah, no, I honestly, I was just sick of the guy, so. No, I wasn't. Okay, I'm, I'm gonna find myself.
So, uh, anybody else have any comments or concerns about any of the informational? Okay, moving on to old business. Officially, it's operating capital budget. Any comments, concerns? Me on budget? Uh, moving on to new business, uh, consideration and vote on on legal counsel's recommendation to accept plaintiffs. Invitation for dismissal of the North Smithfield School Committee as a defendant in a lifetime contracts. Litigation with the understanding that. School committee believes that its legal interests. Would be adequate, adequately represented in the litigation by the town of North Smithfield Ian. Upon consideration that the North Smithfield School Committee will not incur or be responsible for the town's legal fees.
So in summary. This is litigation about lifetime contracts. We do not have lifetime contracts. We're in North Smithfield, and the litigation went out, included every single municipality. Every public entity with a uh collective bargaining agreement. All right, so, but what it comes down to is that this is even from uh uh the attorneys from then. They reached out to the school districts and said, you know what, you don't have to incur the cost and the time for this. Uh, the municipalities are represented in this, in this case. Uh, so. I think virtually every school district, the school committee has said, yeah, okay, let. The town, the town has it under control. Um, and so it's, but we just need to go on record that we're not going to be participating in this litigation. And again, that's through recommendation from attorney Stuntio as well.
So just for the record, I did concur, but I I said I have to vote on it, so it's up to the school committee to make that determination. But I do.
Okay.
No, no, no.
Okay.
Although I may know an attorney or something. Um, no, but I concur with it. Um, superintendent called me, briefed me on it, and I just said I I'd like the school committee to to uh vote on it, so. Anybody have any questions or concerns? All right, so hearing none, uh, I'll entertain um. A motion to accept legal counsel's recommendation. To accept the plaintiff's invitation for dismissal of the North Smithfield School Committee as a defendant. In a lifetime contract litigation. At all. Motion been made, is it second?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? The ayes have it. Is there any further business? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion been made, is there a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? The ayes have it.